Five zero four two two. This is an ordinance extending the corporate boundaries to approve, incorporate and zone Willow Ridge subdivision to the R two zoning classification. So, next on the agenda is ordinance number zero five zero four two two for second reading. Is there a motion regarding ordinance zero five zero four two two?
Full comment, Bill.
Yes.
I believe that we have had the updated fiscal plan, which is included in the exhibit. It was updated, I think it was a couple of typos that were fixed by us, so.
Yes, I, yeah, so the motion should be to approve ordinance zero five zero four two two on second reading with the incorporation of the fiscal plan that was dated February twenty second and revised May thirteenth to correct a couple typos. In fact, I will make the motion to approve ordinance zero five zero four two two on second reading.
I'll second that.
It has been moved in second, so now it's open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments? I know the item had come before the council at numerous meetings, so I think we have a lot of information on it. Okay, seen none. All those in favor of adopting on second reading ordinance number zero five zero four two two, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is under new business. The first item we have under this heading is the issue of the bid openings for the community crossings. Is that stated?
Uh, yeah. This is for the twenty twenty two community crossings. Our town attorney has the bid packets. He will open those and read off the contractor's name and the bid amount.
Okay. Drum roll.
All right. We have Baumgartner Asphalt Services. And their bid total is one hundred sixty seven thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Could you say that again, please?
Baumgartner, one sixty seven, three eighty-five, fifty. Good.
Thank you.
He's getting water over there. Trying to open my mouth.
He didn't give me one.
Sorry, my bad.
It's okay, he's getting paper cuts.
Next time, tell them to put their numbers on top.
Yeah.
All right, we have Robertson Paying Inc. With a total bid amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred even.
That's correct. For Robertson Paying.
Box is open, is that the one? That ordinance for the zero five zero four two two?
Yes.
It's not in our packet, the copy that ordinance. And I went back to May fourth and it's not a copy from that packet either, so that needs to find out. I need the copy attached to the agenda.
It was in your package the meeting.
I, I need a copy on the agenda that's on the civic website, so that if we pull up that agenda a year from now, that copy will show up on that agenda.
Okay.
On, on the website.
All right, finally, we have Globe Asphalt Paying Company Inc. With a total bid of one hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred nine dollars and twenty cents.
One hundred forty thousand, three hundred nine, twenty.
No, one forty-eight, one forty-eight, three oh nine, twenty.
One forty-eight, three oh nine, twenty.
Okay. Okay. Now, Steve, let me ask you this, because the lowest bid is not necessarily the best bid. So, do you have experience working with all three of these? Or do you have a recommendation as to which one we should accept?
Well, typically what I do is I'll have to go back and, and double check all their figures for the unit prices and everything. I'll look at their financials, I'll look at their paperwork is okay through E-Verify, which is that they're okay to do the end dot projects and everything. And then, once I've gone over all that, I can award the lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Yeah.
I'll put that a few days.
Because sometime in those bids, don't they put a, a caveat in there about the raising price of asphalt?
I don't allow for it.
Okay, they, they used to do that all the time, I know.
I don't allow for it, as like, because they, and it was asked this year because of, obviously, grid prices and everything, but when I, when I bid, we weren't in this situation, so.
Okay. So, Steve, what do you need from us? Do you need us to approve and allow you to award the bid?
Typically, that has been what has happened in the past. End dot will send, uh, I will award, you're compelled to award to the lowest bid if they're responsible and responsive. If you do that at a council meeting, typically, I just go ahead and award the low bid if everything looks good on the paperwork. End dot, since they've switched over to DocuSign, will send me a draft copy of the contract. Council could have a look at that. It's the same contract we've been signing the last four or five years. And then, um, they'll send you an email and a text notification to get your signature on it.
So, do we need to do anything this evening, or do we wait perhaps the next meeting after you've done that?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Or you can approve this meeting that I can award to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder.
Okay. I'll make that motion. You want to second that motion? It has been moved and seconded to authorize Steve Poole to award the contract to the lowest responsible, responsive bid through his determination process. Is there any discussion regarding this matter? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and Steve, you are authorized to award after you determine which one is the lowest responsible, responsive bid. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance for the use and placement of key boxes. And, go right ahead. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Will Friedrich, the Division Chief of Prevention for Sugar Creek Township Fire Department. And what we presented for you was a potential ordinance for any new businesses that come into the town to provide a key box, or better known as a Knox box, as the entrance of their building to allow us easy access into the building without doing any damage to the doors. The keys are very secured. There, we have an audit system in the fire department for the apparatus that has the keys. But the fire department is the only ones that are able to access this. And what it does is, it allows us to get into a building quicker and get into the mechanical rooms. If they're, the building is sprinkled, we can prevent less water damage if we're able to shut the sprinkler down quicker. So, uh, so we have presented, uh, do you all have a copy?
Yep. Yes. I see that, but the general stance.
So, do you have any questions on that?
I do not.
Do a lot of people have it now, or?
Uh, right now, we have thirty-six businesses in the township that have it.
Okay. And if we pass an ordinance, then anybody within town limits that meets the criteria would be required to do so.
Correct.
To me, it's an absolute no, right? I mean, it not only is a safety feature, it can minimize damage to the property, and more importantly, it allows you to get into a building or facility faster. And save you from having to knock the door.
Right. The, the cost for one of these boxes is approximately five hundred dollars. So, it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not really a large amount. If you had to have a locksmith come in to fix your door, or fix your lock, it could potentially cost more than that, so.
Sure. First, I have to put the door back to the yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the information. And, let's see, this would be ordinance number zero five one eight two two, if I'm correct. So, is there a motion regarding ordinance number zero five one eight two two?
A motion to approve ordinance zero five one eight two two. I second that.
Is there any further discussion or comments regarding this matter?
Is this, do we have two reads on this, or just?
We'd have to do two reads, although, you know, this is one of those that we could. Let's first see if we, what the vote comes, let's see what, how the vote comes out before we can go to any further steps. All those in favor of approving ordinance number zero five one eight two two, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, because approval on first reading was unanimous, if anyone were so inclined to make a motion to waive the rules and request approval of ordinance number zero five one eight two two on second reading at this time, that would be an appropriate motion.
Make the motion to waive the, do the second reading right now.
I second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules and adopting ordinance number zero five one eight two two on second reading at this time, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, and we will have this ordinance put into our ordinance book, and certainly think that it's a, a nice safety measure for us to implement.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, under the heading of new business, is Woodland Terrace, and they're requesting the town to sign Form CF one. Is there anyone here this evening on behalf of Woodland Terrace that could answer any questions regarding this item? I have a couple of questions that I'd like to get answers to before we, you know, take any action on this item. I wasn't on the council when the tax abatement was approved, so I don't know how many years it was for, the year it started.
Oh, it was approved in two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
And they never, uh, of course, they, they wanted about three or four years to get it built before they started doing their, uh, uh, taking their, uh.
Right, the, the abatement was, because the assessment hadn't hit.
So, I mean, then they had a five-year abatement, and I don't know if we had the, it was like a hundred percent, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it didn't go down very much. I mean, I think even the last year was like ninety percent, one hundred, eighty percent.
It's ninety percent, uh, we're in the third year of it. Third year is ninety, fourth year is ninety, fifth year is ninety, and then sixth is no abatement.
Yeah.
And we're in the third year.
So, so according to their initial abatement, I, I remember this, you know, you know, we don't have the paperwork in front of us, uh, that the abatement, they had to fit those five years within ten years. So, I mean, it looks like to me that they'll make that if they, if they do the next couple of years. This is their third year.
Well, and I know that there was a year that they did not apply for them. They didn't file the paperwork, didn't submit it, so they paid taxes one of those years. And I don't know, Ted, does that add a year to the back end because they failed to file the paperwork?
No, it shouldn't.
Okay.
It's a, it's a set time period.
No, I remember that thing distinctly said it had to be, I got that on some place, but I didn't.
And you know what?
Yeah.
Instead of asking you to ferret through and find it.
Yeah.
If we had a representative from Woodland Terrace.
Yeah.
I would hope they could answer those questions, so, because.
But we have a copy of that here at Town Hall and other.
Right.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm kind of inclined, and I'll make a motion that we table this matter to the next meeting, and that we ask somebody from Woodland Terrace to be here to answer a couple of questions, and they can action at the next meeting.
Well, well, I wonder why they wait so long to bring it, because it says right here it has to be done before May sixteenth.
Well.
It's filed.
It was filed, make this.
It is filed, make this.
Can they file it without our approval or signature?
Yeah, I mean, basically, they'd file it, they'd give, they'd give it up there, consider
Okay.
Yeah.
And we have a receipt date stamped on here, it may fifth, so.
Well, that was filed with the auditor, not with us.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, when we got it.
Yeah, so I don't know if we're going to miss another year or not, but I think it would be helpful if somebody were here to answer some questions, so, again, I'll, I'll make the motion to table the matter to the next meeting, and then Jim and somebody could reach out and have a representative come here to answer some questions, I think it would help. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that. Table.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of tabling Woodland Terrace tax abatement form to the next meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Bill, it might give us the opportunity to meet new ownership.
Yeah, I mean, it has changed ownership, and again, it, I just think it would be very helpful if we could get the numbers before, you know, if you have a better idea of knowing whether to approve it or not.
So, with motion theory, you're by the same.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of, see if I get a number correct, it would be resolution number zero five zero four two two B A. Let's go ahead. And this is a resolution for the preliminary authorization to take actions regarding economic development revenue bonds and related matters for the TIF request for the apartment complex immediately south of the wellness center. And that is a request from the Bakovic companies. So, what this is, and everybody's received a copy of the resolution, you know, I don't know exactly what month this matter first came to us, but we've had numerous meetings, a lot of discussion, and in order to go through any TIF process, there has to be a gauge, just a determination of whether there's any interest in moving forward or not. So, this is a preliminary authorization, and as stated in Resolution zero five zero four two two A, all this does is allow this matter to proceed to the redevelopment commission, the economic development commission. You know, there's an awful lot of work from this point forward, and, you know, as I understand it, you know, at the last meeting, you know, representatives of the Bakovic company said that they basically need to know, is it a yes or a no? Are we moving forward or not? So, that is what the purpose of Resolution zero five zero four two two A is, and this is a resolution that I spoke with the council who would serve as bond counsel on behalf of the town, and that's Brian Bosma, and, you know, he indicated that this was the first step in the process, and he laid out a timeframe, timeline of all of the steps, and I just received that. So, let's first see if there's any interest in moving forward, so that's the explanation of the resolution.
I mean, I know, myself, I'm interested in moving forward, but I've been away a little bit lately, so I'm trying to understand the full magnitude, what does, I, I'll, from what I see.
Let's get a motion.
Okay.
And that way, then it's open for discussion, so.
Can he get his question answered first before that?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, if you'd like, although procedurally, we get a motion, we second it, and it's open for discussion.
Ten?
Yeah, generally, generally, discussion takes place after there's a question available, so.
Although, I mean, is that, is that a requirement, or, I mean, because certainly, we can discuss it before a motion's made.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear more information. Sure.
Hold on. We're not going to take a vote without a lot more information, so, but, okay.
You can free answer his question if you'd like.
Absolutely.
I think those are just what, what I've, from in the past, when we've had, you know, discussions with this group, it sounds like of all the different kind of apartments, we've seen this has been the one that we actually would like, and it seems to me, like, check all the boxes. So, as far as that part, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I'm just wanting to know about what we have now.
Sure. And, you know, and we have, Mr. Bakovic is here, and other representatives, so if there's anybody that, um, you know, and I did make the statement at the last meeting, because Mr. Wagner asked me point blank, I think he wanted to know whether he's wasted his time to come back to the meeting, you know, would there be the opportunity for discussion before we vote, or would we follow our agenda in that comment isn't until after all business is concluded? And, you know, even though that's the way our agenda is written, um, you know, when we have something like this that is of importance, and that there is public interest, it's, in my opinion, that's exactly the time that you kind of go a little bit out of order, and let anybody and everybody who's here, you know, say anything that they'd like to say. We've had a lot of discussions on this matter, but, you know, like Chris said, you know, he wasn't here at every one of those meetings, and, you know, so, um, I'm all in favor of hearing everything that anybody has to say on the matter, and, and Chris, so that if I can try to explain, this is my summation of the information that was presented at the last meeting, and then at one of the meetings Buzz made a presentation about TIF and the whole process, might have been a little bit more technical, um, than everybody needed, but it, it's what the process is. So, my understanding is that, you know, initially, Bakovic companies came to us, um, you know, we went to their property, a couple of us toured it, and it is absolutely a top-notch, high-quality apartment complex, and that's what they're proposing. So, you know, we liked it, they came in, made presentations, they gave us, you know, the, um, elevations of what different buildings would look like, a site plan showing where the different buildings and what types of structures would be located on the property, and then they started lining up their financing. It's my understanding that this will have, it will be a sixty-one million dollar investment. And in order to finance that, they reached out to their lenders, and the lenders, they make loans on a commercial property based on the revenue that's going to be generated from the project. Well, to get sixty-one million dollars worth of financing, the lenders require a little bit extra revenue stream, and that's where the TIF bond financing comes into play. So, what is requested, and, and at some point Buzz, I'll let you give, maybe if there's more technical explanation, but again, as I understand it, they're asking the town to issue a five million dollar bond that over the life of the bond, that can go up to twenty to twenty-five years at the absolute maximum. The property would be built, it would be assessed, and I think Buzz made calculations based on like about a thirty to forty million dollar appraised value. And the way the TIF works is whatever taxes would be paid on the thirty to forty million dollar assessed value, which won't happen until probably three years from now, because it'll take a year or two to, to construct, then you're always a year behind in assessment, and there may be, you know, a couple of different phases, so until you get up to the full, you know.
I'm familiar with how TIF works.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I understand how TIF works, I'm just asking about the question.
Cut me off.
Okay. So, I didn't know the final numbers or anything, or.
It's five millions, what they're asking, and then, so what the proposal is, when the hospital came in and did their TIF, you know, it was the first TIF that the town had ever done. The agreement was that the redevelopment commission would get fifty thousand dollars a year, and we haven't received that yet. I think next year will probably be the first year that that's actually made, see the next year or the year after. This particular bond proposal is the developer will get seventy-five percent, and the town, through the redevelopment commission, will get twenty-five percent. Buzz's number put that at about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. So, three years, four years from now, there would be set, because again, they pay the taxes, instead of paying it into the county, they are able to keep seventy-five percent. The town gets twenty-five percent, and again, there are statute and rules on what can be done with that twenty-five percent. So, and, and then that's over the life of the bond issue until it's retired. Let me know any other, and, and then we'll see if I'm even close.
I didn't have, I didn't have all the numbers.
Yeah.
I've been firming with the TIF.
Okay. I sure wasn't.
Okay.
Just one clarification, they actually do pay it to the county.
Oh, they, and then it's paid back.
And then all the incremental, the incremental tax revenue is what's captured by the RDC, and we would, we would collect all that, but they would pay seventy-five percent back.
So, Buzz, right now, do you have any, is it one percent, two percent, the cap that applies to, I know in apartments, it's two percent, and my understanding is whatever the taxes are on the land right now, that have been the taxes on the land for the last twenty years as adjusted, whatever those taxes are, that amount still gets paid to the county. So, there's no.
Sure.
Loss, but the other taxing authorities don't receive a portion of the increased assessment until the bond is retired. And again, that's just Buzz or anyone else, let me know if, that's my understanding of how it works.
And, Bill, what is the number after the bond retires?
You mean that?
It's about six hundred twenty thousand dollars is the gross tax increment that's anticipated on, on the assumed thirty-one million of incremental assessed value.
Okay.
If that, and that's at the two percent cap.
Right, and, and because the apartments, not housing, traditional housing is a one percent cap, the one percent tax rate. This is two, and a commercial or industrial is a three percent.
Okay.
So, what is agriculture? So, what is agriculture?
Uh, two.
Just, just, okay, I didn't know what farm was taxed at. So, again, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I'm like you, I'd like to hear what the, what you guys have to say.
Sure, so, at this time, again, going a little bit out of order, but, you know, keeping with what I said we did at the last meeting, I'm gonna open the floor. If there's anybody in the audience that has any comments that they'd like to share, please come on up to the podium, give us your name, share with us whatever you'd like, and we appreciate any additional input. Okay, see you, Dan.
Go ahead, you're on, Roger.
Go ahead. I've got some, but I didn't know you were back there.
So, mine is, uh, Chris Wornamont, thirty-nine, eleven thousand and fifteen. My understanding from the last discussion that is they're asking for fifty percent or seventy-five percent of the TIF.
Seventy-five.
They're asking for the seventy-five.
Which is unlike the, the hospital, it was just an agreed fifty thousand a year, which might equate to nine or ten percent.
Okay, so, developer got approval in fall of two thousand twenty-one, so just last fall, without this, without, without asking for this. Uh, so now they want, now I've heard that, I've heard eight million out there, as well as the five million.
There is no eight million. Like, not, it's not involved in what we're doing.
Oh, wait a minute now, I would say that.
Okay.
I would make that statement.
I just did.
Okay, you're wrong.
They're asking for five million.
Five, yeah, I think originally, maybe eight million was discussed, but five million is where the ask is right now.
So, it would stop at five million?
That, yeah, it would be.
There's no interest involved there or anything?
No, well, there, there is interest fact.
Well, that adds honey to it, Buzz.
I got you.
Right, so, I don't know if it was, it was two meetings ago, so a month ago, I'm understanding that it was, the ask was eight million over a certain period of time.
I, I don't remember it ever being discussed.
Boy, Clint, you seem to know, I know you're going for it.
That, yeah, that, that may include all the interest.
Yeah.
Would there be that much interest? And I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I've got. Yeah, th- there's a, four, five and a quarter percent interest would be a taxable interest rate. It comes to, uh, let's see. It's about, the net amount's about seven point eight million. Part of the sizing of the five million includes three and a half years of capitalized interest. And so, that, that amounts to about nine hundred thousand. And so, I deduct, if you deduct, it's on, it was on the payment schedule that was handed out. But, uh, that, that nine hundred thousand of capitalized interest is already factored into the five million dollar bond size. So, the net principal and interest, uh, coming from, uh, actual TIF revenue is about seven, just under seven point eight million.
So, just to.
That's over how many years?
That's over, uh, twenty-one and a half years with eighteen years of principal and interest retirement. Cause we assume that, uh, we're already two or three, three, at least three years into the life of the existing TIF area, and it would take about three and a half years before increment would come. So, the actual amortization is over eighteen years.
Okay.
So, like you get a, I guess, boiled down to gravy then, if, like you get a loan on your house, you got a principal of five million, with all the principal interest you can pay over the, over the course of the loan, it's eight million or seven point eight. Okay?
Or more. I, I reckon on mortgage.
Yeah, with, with rates. Okay, so, so that, that feeds into my, my concern, and you all, everybody here knows my concern about Willow Ridge and the real market conditions. Uh, I have a statement that I read from the planning commission, and I'm gonna reread it, uh, from January nineteenth, where I said that the average rate on the popular thirty-year mortgage hit three point seven Tuesday, according to Mortgage News Daily. Well, what is it today, it's five point five. So, just four months later, it's five point five. So, clearly, the, the developer's asking for this because the market conditions have changed, or at least that appears to be the situation, the Fed has tightened, mortgage rates are the thirteen-year-high climbing. And these are home mortgages, they're really, commercials, not the same, but it does track, generally speaking. Uh, if the market tanks or when the credit, credit bubble, um, or they can come ask for the rest of it. Like, ask for all, and that's something I think we need to think about as well. Uh, so, the TIF, uh, you know, again, think about what the intended the TIF is. It's not the finance developers' properties.
Chris, can, can I try and get an answer to that? So, Buzz, what happens?
If the, if the increment doesn't come in as high as anticipated, and the agreement with the developer and the town still specifies that seventy-five, twenty-five, they're limited to what they get paid back based on whatever that seventy-five percent of the increment turns out to be.
So, and, and is there, what's the exposure?
There's no exposure to, it would not be a tax-backed bond by the town.
We wouldn't have to pay it.
Right, the only risk would be on, on their end, if, if the increment doesn't materialize, they just won't be able to get the money back.
Okay, so it doesn't harm us?
There'll be, yeah, you would have to agree to do a property tax backup, which that's never been, you know, on the table now. There's no, there's no risk to the, the town that the taxpayers would ever have to kick in anything to make these bond payments, and, uh.
Okay, and I, and I'm sorry, Chris, as you bring up a very valid point, it's worth, and I don't know the answer. So, if Buzz can help us, then we'll get the answer.
Yeah, just, as, you know, I'm not a real estate attorney, just as a community member, it just seems, hey, I thought we had a deal last fall. Now, now they're coming and asking for seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent of the TIF, not even twenty-five percent of it, they're asking for seventy-five. That seems like it's pretty, pretty strong bill to take. So, I'm recommending to you guys not to accept this.
The hospital got ninety-two percent.
Well, it's a hospital. So, I mean, again, you guys.
That was the deal we made with the hospital.
Right.
So.
Yeah, they didn't come back and ask for more. So, then maybe, so, um, those are, those are my guys.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wagner?
Dale Wagner, four four six two, South Six Hundred West. So, the first thing I did in researching this TIF was, um, obviously, I was curious how the hospital was doing. So, I went out on the gateway and, and looked it up, and, um, while the, the report states in here from Buzz that we get that fifty thousand dollars a year you mentioned, um, last year, in twenty twenty-one, we got thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. So then, I printed out more documents, so, the economic development plan was passed in two thousand nineteen, December two thousand nineteen. So, there was a report due in twenty twenty, which, um, doesn't state any parcels or any dollars or anything in it. So then, the next year in twenty twenty-one, the report finally has some dollars in it, but down here, it lists three parcel numbers. None of these parcel numbers except one, which is actually exempt, um, and that would be the large pond next to six hundred, um, is listed on here. These other two parcel numbers, I can't even find in the GIS, so, um, and they don't match the other lot numbers that are there. So, I, I looked at these documents and, and, you know, it's kind of like, what is this really? It also lists the incremental assessed value, which is really what we're concerned about. You mentioned, Bill, the, um, current value of the land versus the improvements, what value that brings. So, when you look at this, the numbers across here, whether it's a gross assessed value, the net assessed value, or the base value, they're all the same. So, it's hard to even look at these reports and know what the impact of what's going on over there, and what are we really looking at? So, um, maybe somebody, and, and I appreciate your resolution, because I thought we were coming in here tonight to approve this or disapprove this. Um, so I'm glad this is going a, a different direction. So, that was some of my concerns with the gateway. Also, there's a letter, I'm sure you'll receive the letter from Dr. Landtrip, um, about the, uh, TIF, which she is definitely, definitely not for, um. Not received the letter?
No.
No, in fact, I personally spoke with Dr. Landtrip, and she indicated that you asked her to be here tonight, and she said she wouldn't be here tonight, and she wouldn't be here to oppose it.
Can we get a copy of the letter?
Sure.
So, I mean, that's, I know, say what my conversation with her was.
I had a conversation with Bob Yoder, and he wasn't on board.
He was not on board?
He was not on board.
Sure, I'll be going ahead and sharing with you.
Roger, it was in the paper too, that you, this, you actually against that?
Yeah, the, she stated in an article in the paper, in a past article, that she was against it, so.
Did she say why she was against it?
Um, she goes through a lot of things about the impact of it on those schools and, and their operating budget and, and that sort of thing. She, she seems to be more positive about, um, tax abatements as a, uh, as a vehicle for development as opposed to TIFs.
That's what Bob Yoder said too.
Yeah, and the only problem is the abatement doesn't show a revenue stream for the developer to get the funds. So, I mean, they're, they're definitely different vehicles, but they also serve different purposes. So, if you have a developer that's paying you for a government one-hundred percent pocket, an abatement serves them equally well. But the TIF shows a revenue stream for purposes of financing, so. Okay?
I, I.
Is there anyone else?
Just once more, Bill, I think.
Yeah, correct.
Um, the things you can use the TIF money are pretty specific. And, and part of, and, and I remind the three of you that were here last meeting, um, when Brakes Spivey was talking about, you know, it's kind of like, does this generate jobs? What, you know, is it for the good of the people? Yes, it makes apartments, and some people need apartments, but what about the townspeople? What's it good for for the townspeople? Are we, are we generating jobs with this development? You know, TIF money is usually for infrastructure. The roads are already in that complex, so the roads going into the apartments are part of the development, not part of the town's expenses. So, those are all things that I hope you'll be looking at as it goes through these other committees.
Thank you, and, and I will come out in the second whereas paragraph in the resolution. And, and this is a resolution, not an ordinance. I think earlier, I might have incorrectly referred to it as an ordinance, it's resolution. And in the second whereas, Mr. Bosna has cited the purpose of TIF financing, and the purpose of TIF financing is to finance the cost of acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipment of economic development facilities in order to foster diversification of economic development and the creation or retention of opportunities for gainful employment in or near the town. So, it, it doesn't even have to say that this is a project that's going to generate jobs, which I think was Mr. Spivey's concern at the last meeting. Instead, it does housing foster employment. I believe that it does, and I know that there are a lot of, you know, the warehouses going up north, there's a lot of activity, people need to live somewhere. So, and in my conversations with Brian Bosma, he's indicated that an apartment complex absolutely fits within the statutory definition for TIF financing, so.
I mean, the way I envision it, you put those apartments, how that does, you're gonna have to have more restaurants, shops, businesses right around, if that was gonna help. That's, that was my fault, am I? Has anybody not seen that that was what would happen there, and it would bring in more on the, I mean, that's kind of the way I envisioned what we're trying to do here, am I wrong?
Well, I can tell you, and I am a real estate attorney, and I work for a real estate developer. And a perfect example, it has now been announced that the Taco Bell is going to go right into corner next to the Fifth Third Bank. So, that, that's already a public announcement. Within seven days of that announcement being public, we've had ten inquiries on the two lots immediately to the north of it. Activity breeds activity. So, you know, you have to look at the town, and also, you know, I know we're going through the process to update the comprehensive plan, it's about six years old. You know, we're making those decisions one at a time. You know, where is it that you want additional living? Do you want multi-family living, even to be a possibility, apartments? It hasn't come yet, but there probably will be a request at some point in time. Somebody's gonna come to us and say, it's great that you have three hundred thousand dollar houses, five hundred thousand dollar houses, apartments that cost eleven hundred dollars a month. But what about some government subsidized, low-income, section eight, whatever it may be currently? That request will come, i- it's not if, it's when. And we have to decide, number one, is that what we want? And then, just as important, where do we want it if we want it? So, you know, again, to me, and, and I met with, help me, Jim, two first names, Rob, George, with the hospital.
Oh, Rob Matt.
Thank you, Rob Matt. And I apologize to Rob, I, I just got his name wrong. But, he, he said that, you know, they had been approached by several developers that wanted to build immediately south of the wellness center, and they said no.
Yeah.
Because the quality was not, they don't want that, that's prepared.
Yeah, we want the nice apartments, that's why I liked it a lot.
When the, the COVID company, and, and help me, am I pronouncing it even?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Cause, and again, I'm, I'm terrible at names.
Ask my wife.
So, you know, is this what we want, and is this where we want it? And, you know, being at the intersection that this is located, in my opinion, this is the perfect location. It causes the least disruption with infrastructure and the rest of the town. And, you know, you will see a lot more activity, not just in that general area, but throughout the town, activity breeds activity. And we said no to every one of those additional inquiries. That's not working at all. Next to Taco Bell. Just cause you give interest doesn't mean it's something you wanna do.
Interest, they ask interest, from the town or ask interest from the Fod?
No, from the Fod. I'm just saying, from my experience, activity promotes more activity. Julie?
Putting my Main Street hat on here, I'm a real small fish in this big fish fry, but we're working on a grant with the American Rescue Plan. And one of the hopes and dreams that we have is working with the town, seeing the town center pictures is something I really think is the vision we all need to look at. That would benefit the town, the community members, we could have employment, we could have an event center, it would be a lot more for everybody's bang of their buck.
Ted? Can redevelopment commission use proceeds from the TIF for the promotion of the town center?
See whatnot?
Okay, so, I mean...
They've got almost plenary unit pallet, you already seen, I mean, they can make just...
So whether it was purchasing, laying in, building the first building of a town center, because, you know, I have heard from multiple people that town hall didn't end in a bank. It might be nice if town hall was actually located in a building that was designed for a town hall. So this is a way that we possibly finance some of that, or contribute towards it.
I have questions.
Yes.
So, our comprehensive plan is six years old.
Yes.
And we keep annexing in properties for talking about TIFs to apartment complexes based off of the six-year-old comprehensive plan. The reason why we have these comprehensive plans is to plan it. For putting a lot of things before that, I mean, it would be better if we had a comprehensive plan that we were basing all of this off of in a step process to this. One, that's one. All right, keep going, just hang on. So, I read a letter from Dale, from Lisa Landtrip. So you had a conversation with Lisa Landtrip, and Lisa Landtrip said she was on board in your conversation? And then we get this letter from Dale that says that she's not on board.
And the letter that Dale handed out is dated January 19th. My conversation was four days ago.
My conversation with Bob Yoder was about two months ago. He pretty much said the same thing that was in that letter. So have you talked to Lisa Dale recently?
I just emailed her, told her this was coming up at the meeting.
And she sent emails?
Mm-hmm.
In the recent email?
Yes.
Can you forward that to me?
Sure.
And then my other issue is the council was invited back in January to go tour the apartments up by St. Vincent, which you, Jim, and I went to go see. And then we came back, they came and talked to us, we had a meeting about it, said how nice they were, there was a discussion on how many units there was going to be, and then, at least on my end of it, that's the last I've heard. I've not been informed, invited, given information within these other meetings that have taken place. And I think that that's something that should have been shared across all five council members, and I've not seen anything like that. So in order for me to either vote for or against a TIF, I need to have all that information in front of me, and I don't want to hear about these backdoor things or things that were promised, I wanted the information, all of it, in front of me so I can make an informed decision. And I don't feel like I have all that yet.
Okay, what I share is what I have. In that the developer has said, they, it's not, we've talked about it for months and months, is the town in favor or not? Basically, it's, we need to know whether this is moving forward or we go somewhere else, so.
Well, I mean, all council members were on board, and we're giving all the information and make-up decisions, and we wouldn't be going back and forth, but, I mean, bits and pieces.
Well, and keep in mind, tonight's resolution, it sets in place moving forward, that's it. This is not...
This is the final vote?
Absolutely not close to it. In fact, let me share something that I received today. This is a timeline that, if we take a vote on this resolution and it's not approved, you can throw this away.
Okay, yeah, does this go hard for my office?
Yes, I got this from Brian Bosna. And it's a timeline that sets forth, starting today, if this preliminary, and it is preliminary, resolution is approved, there's a weekly timeframe of what has to happen between now and October 24th. And obviously, you miss one deadline, you add a week to everything, but the earliest, if everything was met without any delays, is October 24th. So this is not final, they just need to know, do we even want to move forward? And I read this resolution, again, that was prepared by Brian Bosna, it's simply an indication that either yes, we're in favor, or no, we're not in favor of even considering the project moving forward. That's all that will be announced, this is it.
Now, I, because I seriously don't remember, because we've done so much stuff over the way. Was, is that a council bill for the bondsman, or is that just the council president? Or did we, did we do that? I just don't remember it.
It's just, there has been no determination, other than I will tell you this, I will not let the hospital pick the bond counsel. I won't let the developer pick the bond counsel. So that means the town council picks the town council.
The bond.
The bond counsel, because who do we want representing us?
Because I know that when we did the hospital, they used, I think Bose McKinnon, and that bill was absolutely ridiculous, so it was across the board that, that we were not going to use them again, but...
Well, I have other reasons for not using that particular law firm.
Well, yeah, I think Ted, when you interviewed for this job, you talked about the bond counsel, and maybe you paid my, a little bit too much for that.
Yeah, I think it was actually Barnes.
Yeah, I remember that very well.
It was about $105,000, um...
Or more.
Or more. I mean, bond counsel are never cheap, you're not, there's only a few people who do it, honestly, in the city. Probably five firms do it, and we have to make one of them, and I think we are the least cheaper than all of the other guys.
And because you asked that, Clint, you know, when we hired Ted, there was, you know, it's not a one-man shop, or a five-man shop, who's going to send an associate that's going to get us into a lawsuit, like our prior attorney? You know, we have litigation expertise, so that when we pursued over the event center, we didn't shop who was going to represent us, we knew who we were. So to me, this isn't even up for debate or question when Ted's firm is the lowest charging bond counsel in town. I don't need to hear what Ice Miller's gonna charge, or Baker and Daniels, or Barnes and Thornburg, and I have zero interest in any one of them taking me to lunch or any other reason to try to influence who we use.
I just, you keep dropping the bondsman's name, and you presented this, and I just didn't know when we approved that, that was my only question.
We haven't approved it.
Okay, so we have this whole thing laid out?
And we're not even approving this timeframe. He went through the statute and said, these are the steps.
Okay.
That's right, we have to mitigate his bond counsel.
Nope. It's what I know who I want, or I'll be on counsel. So, is there anyone else in the audience that has anything that they would like to share?
Ted, we're up to the Federal Drive, Deep House, Indiana. I don't like to get up and talk about people in front of people, because I'm not comfortable doing it, because you're gonna end up saying something I'm sorry for, okay? But we moved here a little over sixty years ago, and nobody likes to hear about the old days, I understand that. Walked uphill, go clean the school, or whatever.
In the snow.
But, uh, town was about 600 people. We had everything we needed, we had grocery store, drugstore, hardware, gas stations. In the eighties, we got a sewer. And I'll start off by saying, I'm not anti-development, I'm not formed for oath, I'm not against it, because it's gonna happen. I grew up on the east side of Indianapolis when it was farmland. Someday, there'll be houses from here to Fountain Town, okay, so, forget that. But the town pretty much stayed the same until we got sewers. And after that came, there was a few developments out around, and the people that lived here all their life were upset because of the interwoofers coming out here from Indianapolis. And when we got sewers, the developers started coming, 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 because now we can put three houses on an acre instead of one. You don't blame them for that, I mean, we've hit business, and they're just... The thing that bothers me is Harding Farm, Crystal Heights, Seiford Creek, all of them. I'm not against them, don't get me wrong, I'm not, because I live in the old part of town. Every development or has ever come to this town, their attitude is, oh, we're gonna do this, this is wonderful for your town, look what we're doing for your town. We didn't need them, we were doing fine without them, they needed us. But they always present it like, what, all we're gonna do for the town, this is wonderful, well, look at all this, and all that kind of thing. I kind of liken it to when the pilgrims landed and told the Indians how much better everything was gonna be. Go ask the Indians how they feel about that. So anyway, but it happens, it goes on down the road. But back when, in the first developments, we kind of, we didn't get all excited about the growth and this and that and the other, we had it, we had to deal with it, and took it. It seemed like now, though, we want to get bigger, we want to get bigger. We got all this money coming in, and we gotta get this territory before Cumberland does, and we gotta get it before Greenfield does, and all this kind of stuff. Because we're afraid what might happen if we don't do it. And maybe that's not all bad, but sometimes we tend to give away, we get going to quality, or quantity instead of quality, or something like that. And I sit and listen to all this stuff, and all the numbers they talk about don't mean nothing to me, because I pretty much won't math in high school anymore. So you can talk about the numbers of what we're gonna get, what we ain't gonna get, what's this, what's that. The thing, and I never, I don't like to get up and talk about stuff, but the thing that upsets me about this project is, I sit and listen to all the meetings, the planning commissions and all that, what a wonderful company this is, and all the things that they did, and it's, oh, this is such a good fit, and all that. And like I said before, the town doesn't really need this, they need the town. They come in and they present all of this stuff, and it's a great company, and I don't question what they're on, and this and that and the other. They get it all approved, then they come back and say, oh, by the way, we need the money, we don't have the money to do it, we need your help to get the financing. Well, I say, you know, when we bought a house in town, we didn't ask the town for help. We bought a business in town, we didn't ask the town for help to buy the business, or buy a car, or anything else. So why should we help them? That's my opinion. If you, if the company isn't financially sound enough to do it on their own, forget it. Find somebody to come down the road, because we don't need those apartments, they need us. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, again, we've talked about this, and Jim, Chris wasn't here. You went to a conference with other town managers, and one of the topics was TIF financing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So tell us just a little bit about that.
Well, along with municipal, Plainfield being one of them, I think the largest, I think we had that conversation. They have one of the biggest TIF districts, and their surplus of extra money, and I get it, you know, we talked about, you know, houses that were coming here, the impact, Buzz, correct me, I'm gonna do some Buzz math here. I think I calculated it would take 100 acres, 200 homes, 300,000, 300,000 dollar homes to accommodate what this footprint's gonna take, you know, to that assessed value. You know, that's another 100 acres we're taking out of this county or this area, that's another 200 homes. It's a big impact, you know, versus the small impact of the apartments. This is a tool, that's like Julie said, you know, we owe it, to me, I think we owe it to the community. We're gonna continue to build houses like they plant corn out here, but this community has zero for the community. I mean, you look at the town centers, you look at parks, what do we have? I'll tell you, my wife and I, we go out to dinner, you know where we went? We went all the way out to Centerville, we go all the way to Shelbyville to eat dinner. That's just my wife and myself, you know? So how many dollars are we taking out of this community that we could bring back into this community? It takes a little project like this to bring some of this cash in, to stimulate new business, every day. I mean, yep, McCordsville's growing, I think, what did we kind of calculate with our wastewater, the population increase, maybe in the next, do you remember, I tried to call Megan?
Uh, yeah, it was significant.
Very significant.
Yeah, it would, if you take McCordsville as the model that we anticipate to see on the south side, you know, McCordsville was in a very similar population size to this, six, seven, eight, nine years ago, and now they're up over 10, 12,000.
Yeah, then they built Stansberry. I don't want that to happen.
Yeah. It might take longer, I would like to see a TIF with more jobs, you know, versus this, but at the end of the day, you know, what we're gonna gain off this in the long run, I think it's beneficial. We created this TIF, we have $18 at it right now, you know, what are we gonna do with it? I think it costs us that much to look up records, you know, for consideration. But we have to use this tool, I think we have to be mindful of how we're gonna use it. But to me, I think it's gonna be a great tool to use. I think this is a great project. I understand exactly, my sentiments are with Jake, you know, but, you know, old school? I'm very protective of that myself, I deal with that with my wife, she comes from a farm, farm field here, and we have this conversation daily about growth, you know? I mean, they do not want their farm to be integrated with housing this, but like he said, it will be, you know? Do not tell my partner on that, Jake, but it's just a matter of time, you know, you can't stop growth, we can only plan for it.
And sort of your point, you're right, I know we've had people come to us and ask us about putting houses... We've had people come to us already and ask us to put houses in, and saying, we have to change it around because we want to make money, like you're saying, put three houses, Baker. And like we said, we didn't come to you, you're coming to us, we're not changing the way we want to do this type of thing. I'm not willing to do that for that specific thing, but I mean, I believe these are the kind of apartments, in my opinion, what I've seen, that would actually be beneficial to me. So I kind of, this is a different situation, that those houses I'm not willing to bend on, but I mean, this, I definitely want to look into this more than...
My point is not, I'm not against the apartments, I mean, apartments, houses, we're gonna get that, and I understand it's your job to control and try to get the best development, and I think we have, that's really, everybody wants to move out here, we got great developments, there's no arguments with all that. My argument is, who's paying for it? I said, you know, going back again, when we put sewers in this town, all right, the town took on the debt, the residents and the businesses of the town took on the debt, we didn't have nobody to bail us out. We paid a sewer bill one year during construction, we didn't have sewers. We had to pay a sewer bill in order to pay back the loan that we were getting to build the sewer. And then when we got done with that, we had to pay a hookup fee, and then the people that lived here had to tear out septic tanks, tear down outhouses, and go to a lot of expense. And then when we get done with that, we had to pay a hookup fee, and then the people that lived here had to tear out septic tanks, tear down outhouses, and go to a lot of expense to hook up to the sewer. And nobody bailed us out on that. So I'm not complaining about the development or the apartments or whatever, everybody's done a good job as far as what we've got. It's just that why should we, why should we give up tax money to pay rent for the people in the apartments, because if they have to have that money for cash flow, if I understand a little bit of this, our tax money's going to pay the rent in those apartments. So why should we do that? That's the part I don't understand, I don't mind the development, the people coming out here, we came out here, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not a white ball resident. But I don't think we should pay the way for other people to come out here, that's my complaint.
Is that correct?
What I have seen is night and day different, that with the TIF financing, the quality that can be constructed is absolutely top-notch, it's A-plus. Without that financing, and with the developer doing it a hundred percent, again, without financing, funding it themselves, what you get is a C-minus to a D. And then, quite honestly, those are the types of projects that the hospital has rejected, and that's what they're giving. And to get something much better, that's the need for this request. And again, that's just as I understand.
I would just have one other question to the, to the developer. If they, if you deny the TIF, and they don't get the money, and they, and they're saying, is, is this, is there no way, do they have any other way to finance it one hundred percent? Or is this the only way they can do it, period, in the story?
There's representatives from the developer, I mean, I'm not gonna answer that question.
I can't answer that question.
This is my problem, because based on the information that we have, the, what we have regarding the regional lift station, all these added costs, because obviously cost has gone through the road. It makes the project not feasible without it coming and getting a TIF. I, I'd just like to, from the old farms of Chicago outside of Rockford, when we had developers come in and ask for tips, I was all against it, because I thought we're asking, they're asking for me to subsidize them, it's not that case. That's why we talked to Buzz and we, and we wanted to get a fair understanding of how this process works. It's money that wouldn't have come in regardless, but a lot of the stuff that we're doing with infrastructure is that, is coming to the city, not just, not only for our project. The regional lift station, we, we brought Tim Russell from Myron, Angel, it's gonna be over a million dollars, something we didn't have in our budget, didn't figure, because we thought the system's there. So there's a lot of things to it, and also the standards that the hospital wants us to make is well above what many construction people wanting to develop. Because three, four siding and bricks, those are stuff that don't benefit an apartment developer. But we can retain everything in our, in our, we're fully in our family, so when we build, we build for it to be my generation for the next fifty, sixty years. So, I mean, people have concerns, and I just tell you, based on what we do and how we do it, this is why we're asking for, for this amount of money.
Thank you. And, you know, to the extent we're going to have rental properties, me personally, I would prefer that they be in a rental community that is labeled as such, approved as such, built as such, everybody knows what you're getting. As opposed to developers who come and build subdivisions and then sell their houses to these national rental businesses. And what they are, they're single-family apartments and individual dwellings, and they get run into the ground almost immediately, which is, that's not what I want. So, um, again, I know we went completely out of order, but I think for the public good, it's best that we had this input, not after we made a vote, certainly before, because, you know, everything that has been said is being considered. And me personally, having heard all of it, what it does for the town, what it does for, on its own, the quality, but then, what it's going to generate in additional activity, and I'm not looking to give away the town, but I also am very mindful, it's coming. And right now, we get to pick and choose what's coming. This is one that I would pick to choose to say yes to, but that's just.
The answer to your question that you asked,
Pardon?
The answer to the question that you asked in regards to the TIF and if they didn't give a TIF.
I'm sorry, I don't hear her real well.
You asked about the TIF and if they didn't give the TIF for them to build. We received an email that said they were asking for the five million TIF, and if it wasn't approved for the five million TIF, that they wouldn't be able to build.
Right.
So.
And Angie, I wanna go back to your question about the comprehensive plan. It is currently six years old, but everything, including Willow Ridge, the Wellness Center, anything that's been approved has been consistent with the comprehensive plan. And Jim, am I correct, or is there anything that had to be modified in the comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan, uh, really, it, it touched all the way up to six hundred. The only thing the comprehensive plan, you know, we're struggling with is, you know, we went from forty-five homes a year to two hundred and sixteen, you know, uh, that's gonna continue right now, so.
Well, and so as we update the comprehensive plan, I think, you know, we need to determine, do we want developers to go to the county, develop property under county standards that don't equate to our own? And then after the project is built, and, you know, I don't wanna drop any developers' names, but I think Clint has some firsthand experience where a developer goes to the county, says whatever they want, nobody checks. They built something that's completely inconsistent with what they represented they were gonna build. And as the town, we get stuck with it, and it's a project we would not have approved if they came in and said, this is what we wanna build. So with this project being in-town limits, we know what we're getting, and we have to determine if that's what we want. And, you know, I'm not in favor of annexing just for annexing's sake. But if you do an annexation, and then that gives you a voice at the table of what can and can't be developed, and this has nothing to do with the apartment complex, but we have developers that wanna build and have a garage door eighteen feet from the roadway. How in the world do you park three cars in an eighteen-foot driveway? So now you're putting cars on both sides of a narrow street, how do you get a fire truck through there?
You don't.
You can't, that's exactly it. And you know what the developer says to us? Well, if, if, if we've gotta go more than eighteen foot, we're not coming. And we said, fine, we don't want you. So again, it's part of us picking and choosing, and, and having the luxury to do so. And, and when somebody says, you know, i- if it's not the quality that you want, if it's take it or leave it, I'm all for leaving it. And to the extent that this becomes a, this is the quality apartment complex you can get with a TIF project, it's absolutely beautiful, I would live there in a heartbeat. I'm gonna sell neither of my houses to move there, but, but you'd be proud to live there.
Well, Bill, I'll share, you know, I mean, this is a continued problem, but, you know, right now, I think I spoke that we have some property in town, just outside of town here, it's still on corporate limits, but it's that rental home company out of California, you know, so we will be facing, uh, another issue in hand, I think it's gonna be, you know, if we're gonna do this, you know, it's just, possibly a recomp, and that's gonna be really complex twice.
Yeah, so again, we have to decide, do you want a rent-to-home community, um, so.
Bill, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, go right ahead.
I just, uh, just a matter of style here. Bill, it seems like you, because, probably because you're a real estate attorney, you have a lot of confidence in this, feel like you kind of dominated the conversation, and Chris said some things, and Angela was arguing with you a little bit, I, I think that's good, I think it's healthy, have some argument or a little bit of drama. Uh, I like, I guess I like to see a little more of it, so, Brandy, I haven't heard from you tonight.
I have to abstain from this discussion because the property's owned by my employer, as I stated in the last meeting.
Okay.
Because anything we perceive as influential or opinion.
Who else? Do the property people own that?
But I, one other thing, though, it's, Bill, I think, probably just have a discussion about moving it forward.
That, this is a preliminary resolution, and Chris, would you like a copy of the timetable?
Yes.
Please?
Yeah, I'll get that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and this, again, Brian Boswell prepared that, that said, if we go through this evening with a preliminary approval, that's all it is, do we wanna move forward or not? It's either dead or moving forward. Here's the timeline, and as soon as it can be done is October twenty-fourth. So this is not, if we are end-all, one meeting, vote, and that's it, not at all.
Seems like, seems like you're already on board with it, so, uh, I guess as a matter of style, maybe, feel like,
I am.
Give you, give away your cards too much here, but.
I, I don't mind, we're sharing our opinions, and as much as you're against it, I'm for it.
I can tell that. I, I, I've been with that for, for months now. So that's all I have right now.
Okay.
Bill, I'm gonna bring something up on public safety. So I'm looking at it, taxes on that property right now are six hundred and ninety-eight dollars a year.
Per acre?
That we receive for that, that section where they wanted to build. So we'll always get that six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, that's correct.
On twenty,
Well, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, that's,
Twenty-five acres.
That's the taxes, we don't have to even know that. So if nothing happens with this property, that's a TIF district. So, no matter what they build on that property, my budget, the fire department's never gonna see this money into their thing. I guess my thought is, if twenty years, I'm not gonna get anything for it, does the town benefit in the RDC by at least getting something on this property?
A hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year.
So if that can actually turn around,
Maybe.
And it could support possibly the town center, the town, you know, the town hall, if the fire department needed a new ambulance, they could, like, come to RDC and say, hey, we could really use an ambulance, so.
If the school needed a bus, right now, as agriculture or vacant land, however it's taxed currently, whatever the school gets, they will continue to get.
Sure.
The RDC could buy the school a bus.
So I, I just understand, for the next twenty years, my budget won't, won't be able to utilize any tax dollars from this, however, the RDC will receive monies that can be utilized back for the community.
Yes.
Chief.
Got it.
So will there be a process for us to, um, ask for those funds through the RDC, absolutely?
Absolutely, and that's one of the allowed purposes.
Yeah, we, we kinda had a little communication beforehand, and that, I get it, it was made a TIF district before any of you even got on this thing.
Well, and, and I will share, four days ago, when I talked to Dr. Landry, and I, I said, okay, right now, what you get is what you get, and that's not being taken away. Four years from now, you have the opportunity to go to the redevelopment commission, and, you know, I'm the former school board member. There's nobody that can sing rah-rah more for the schools than me, other than maybe Dr. Landry and a couple others within the school, I cannot do Dr. Fessler, or Mr. Fessler. But, I told her, four years from now, have a seat at the table, come to those meetings, at least there's an opportunity, four years from now, that won't be there without this project.
Is that process already gonna be set up before you start receiving those funds?
I think it should be, absolutely.
And if I'm correct, at the end of that TIF time period, that TIF is up, then the actual tax dollars from that community actually does come back to public safety.
Every taxing authority that would otherwise receive, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Waramont, you noticed you were curious of my opinion, but you didn't ask Clint, he hasn't said anything tonight, are you curious on his opinion?
Oh, he said a few things.
Is it my turn now?
I was, I was worried no one wanted to ask for yours, so.
Well, I had kind of a timeline on this, this, uh, deal here, and, and you know, the planning commission had their meeting, and they confirmed that, you know, the apartments were okay to be built in that zoning district. And then the first I heard about the, the TIF, uh, thing was, uh, like, February twenty-eighth, I got an email about it from Buzz, about having, having us meetings and stuff about it, and, you know, about them getting the stipend from us. And then at the last meeting, Buzz made a presentation on behalf of the developer, and we had no discussion on that presentation at the meeting level, because there wasn't a forum here to take a vote. And then voila, this ordinance appears in my email Tuesday, without us ever having a discussion about it at the meeting level. So my first reaction was, who authorized our lawyer to present this ordinance to us? This is exactly what everybody in this group bitched about the old regime. I don't wanna do, I don't, I'm not in favor of this at all. And to leave the amount open-ended and the timeline open-ended, always comes back to haunt us. We have not paid other developers a stipend, and the reason we established the TIF district was for us to, uh, uh, use the money for, uh, roads, land acquisition, infrastructure, and, and things that are allowed under the TIF. This TIF district out there is two hundred and sixty acres. That leaves the door open for every developer to come in and ask for the same thing with precedent. This is an apartment project, people, not a, a desirable development for me, and anybody I ask in my poll, which I took, was against it. And how can you do a believable projection when my property tax assessment went up twenty percent this year alone? An example of that is the sewer plant projection of twenty to twenty-five homes a year, which was killed in one year. And this project has no correlation with what was done with the Wellness Center. They agreed to pay taxes when they didn't have to. So I don't, anybody that says this has any correlation with the Wellness Center, I beg to differ with you. And also, I wanna see where their five hundred and sixty-four parking places are gonna be.
Thanks, Clint.
And also, the assessment is twice as much as that of Boston Village, which is the same-sized project.
And you get what you pay for.
Well, they won't tell, they won't be looking inside. They don't go inside, so, uh, I'm just telling you, it's the same size, two hundred and eighty-eight at Boston Village, and their assessment, it's half of this.
I'm surprised if that works, Clint.
Yeah. I'm done.
Oh, thank you, Angie.
I'm freezing, sorry. I did crank it down because blood pressures tend to, especially in the meetings at times, so I just wanted everyone to be comfortable, I'm sorry.
Chris, any, chime in, anything you'd like to add, please do.
I mean, I've asked enough questions, I feel like I have what I have moving forward.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, any other comments? I'm going to make a motion, because I'll, I'll be the bad guy, everybody can point the finger straight at me. I'm going to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number Zero Five Zero Four Two Two A. And this is a resolution authorizing further consideration of the proposed economic development revenue financing for this project.
Second that.
I would, I'm fearful to ask if there's any conversation, because we kind of went out of order, so. I think we've had a lot of conversation, and appreciate every bit of it. You know, we do not have, whether it's the five of us, whether it's everybody in the room, we don't have to agree on everything, and that's okay, that is absolutely okay. But I will say, before we take a vote, that there are no backdoor agreements or behind-the-door deals. There's been nothing underhanded about this project. You know, I was accused of being in collusion with a developer because I went and visited their property. I was offered the opportunity to fly to another state to view one of their projects. And after being accused of driving into Castleton to look at their, paid for riding, and I took my life in my hands as Angie drove, but, you know, heaven forbid that, you know, people wanna dig and look and think there's something underhanded here, I'll tell you, dig as much as you want, because I will not ever, not once, not this project, not any, sell my integrity, my reputation, you know, and there's a lot of people in this building, historically, not currently, that can't say that. Every decision they made was how do they steal money, how do they pocket money, how do they personally gain from the decisions that they're making? And you have a different town council, you might not agree with what we do, but I wanna tell you, me personally, and I think I speak for everybody here, every decision we make is because we think it's the best interest of the town, period. That's what I signed up for. No more, no less. So, with that, um, we had the motion, we had the second. There is no further discussion, unless anybody wants to say anything else, because I don't wanna, I'm not trying to stymie anybody else from saying anything that they wanna say. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain.
So, Ted, in a two-two tie, in a normal situation, we would turn to the elected clerk of treasure for the tiebreaker.
She's not here.
She is not here. Will Yvonne be here for the next meeting? Okay, well, then, I would request that the matter be put on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll take another vote at that time, and if necessary, then at least we have the tiebreaking, whether it's for or against, at least we have an answer, and we can tell the developer whether we're moving forward or not.
Does her, does her vote have to come during a meeting, Ted?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we can't take any action outside of meeting. So, and, I asked whether she, if she was happening to be in Florida on vacation, our rules for video participation are, um, if you can be seen and you can be heard, that's counted as being present. But, so if she was in Florida, I would've tried getting her by FaceTime, or Zoom or something, but she's in the Netherlands.
No, no, she's not in the Netherlands.
No?
Well, she, Grant Caven.
Okay. I, I wouldn't bother.
It's a real vacation.
We will have another vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so, we're only on the right team now. Let's move on to department reports. Bob?
I've got nothing.
Jim? You don't have to have a lot.
Yeah. No, I'm happy.
You have a lot. Suzie?
Nothing.
Jay?
We have an in-person audit, it's been moved to June twenty-seventh.
Okay, uh, now we'll open the floor for any other public comments, if there's anybody that'd like at this time to have any input that you haven't had previously, now's the time.
I have one, Bill.
Sure.
It's an easy one. Um, in your minutes, April sixth, if I need to identify myself again.
We know we are, and, and Dale, let me make the same, would you like to see this timetable?
Sure.
I have one for both you and Chris, and anyone else have a couple extra.
Um, and in the minutes, April sixth, it said, recommendation from the planning commission of annexation of Willow Ridge. Actually, the planning commission did not make a recommendation on annexation. It made a recommendation on zoning.
Correct.
So, that should be changed for future clarification.
That's absolutely, they do not have a vote on annexation, it was just the zoning upon annexation.
That was April sixth, four point one.
Okay.
Did you make that yet?
And thank you very much, you're very, absolutely correct. Anyone else? Council council. Clint, you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, yes, I do. Uh, this is, uh, addressed to Ted. Ted, I was looking at the, uh, uh, rules for the, uh, RDC, and I see that we are out of compliance. Uh, the, the members need to be appointed or elected every year, free by the town executive, due by the rest of the council, and their appointment is just for one year. And then also, in another part of the chapter, it says that nobody can be on the RDC that has an interest in the property. Now, I don't know, this is a legal thing, I'd have to go back and do the, all that rigmarole they do, to go back and check everything, but I don't know if that means this allocation area or the whole TIF district. In my opinion, it was the whole TIF district, but that's, that's, I'm not gonna make that decision. And that would be, that was all I got to say.
Okay, we will look into how the RDC is composed, and we'll make sure that, I know the, the plan commission, um, we reconstituted it, because I know I was, although, I couldn't remember who had what positions and who was awarded by who, so I know the plan.
I mean, it would just be a matter of appointing, you know, you making your three appointments, and us confirming the, the appointments, and making sure everybody that's on it can be on it.
Yeah. Okay, and I'm gonna start with.
Might wanna do, might wanna do that before, you know, now that we're gonna wait another, a couple weeks, might be a good idea to think about it.
Do that at the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, can we add that to the agenda so that we properly reconstitute and appoint members to the redevelopment commission?
We may as well look at the EDC to secure the plan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't look at that.
I know we did an organizational meeting in January.
Yeah, yeah.
And addressed some of it.
Well, I know we did the plan commission at that time, because at that time, we had some issues that were coming in front of it, so.
But do you have, like, the RDC and EDC level?
Yeah, okay, thank you, Clint, anything else?
That's all.
Thank you, Chris? I'd like to thank Bill Smalling for being here. Welcome. And our new township trustee, or to be, thank you for joining, and everybody else, thank you for joining. Brandy?
Yeah, actually, um, I do have comments, so Chris, you may or may not be in luck. Um, and in general, it's gonna take a couple minutes, so I apologize, because I'm sure everyone's eager, but I think that, um, I'm entitled to have, you know, a couple of opinions. Um, a couple of things I want to comment on is, I've been thinking about a lot of the input that we receive on development. Where's new power going? What do we want? Who do we want? Um, we are elected to represent everyone in our community. That means the people that live paycheck to paycheck, and that means the people that have the most prolific investment portfolios you can imagine. And last year, at some point, someone approached me in the community, and they said, I wanna talk to you about this development. I wanna talk to you about what's going on, on, in our community, I wanna talk about what you're allowing to come into our community, or, or considering to allow. And a very adept discussion ensued on houses and their value, and the kind of people that may move into those houses, and what we should or we shouldn't want in our community. And with many of those discussions, I realized, and as well as some comments made tonight, that if those values were truly universal, that only acceptable, um, developments and folks to move into our community in the future, those can afford three hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses and up, what are we saying? Because in the reality, if that was the situation, I wouldn't be living in the town, I wouldn't be on your town council, and I wouldn't be involved in your community, because my family is the family that twenty years ago you would have been keeping out because we didn't have value here. Two masters-educated people who don't pretend they're special by any means, that are professionals, that are scouting leaders, that are volunteering in the schools, that are giving back to your community, and you're saying you don't have value, or because you can't afford a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, eighteen hundred square foot house, there's not a place for you. And Bill, no offense, when I heard the comment, um, earlier with Washington Village, you know, we don't want Washington Village, it's an eyesore because, quote, you get what you pay for. Guess where I lived in the first year and a half of my marriage? Washington Village apartments. And I think of friends who live there that are grandparents on single-family income, or fixed incomes, or single parents trying to start over in life, or even your families who can't afford the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses. Um, I'm not gonna argue about twenty-five and thirty-five-foot setbacks, so your fire department can get in there, I'm not arguing those components. I'm arguing the messaging that I hear as a councilman from folks in our community. And so I just want to clarify the sensitivity of this matter and what we seem to project as a town council, as a community, on social media, um, because truly, um, it's bothersome at times. Um, secondly, I wanna address, when we're talking about integrity, I am not going to compromise my values or my integrity to discuss or vote on an issue, no matter how much people want me to do it, for the sake of maybe getting a vote or not, or hearing an opinion in a public setting, I will not do it. And I would expect no less than anybody else on this council if there was a perceived or very real conflict of interest. And if there is a concern over that, I should be approached directly to talk about that issue. Um, the last thing I wanna say is that, um, when folks come to me in the community and ask me questions, if I know what's going on, if I see it in the newspaper before I know what's going on, or I read about it on social media before it's going on, whether it's restaurants locating in town, whether it's development proposals, whether it's, I don't know what you mean, I need to know about it before I read about it in media. And, um, however, we can get better on that topic, um, you know, I really think, I think we do. So, um, I just wanna be mindful of those issues going on, and where I stand on those issues, and I will not waver where I stand, because, for that matter, um, for some people, there's never gonna be an apartment that's good enough, there's never gonna be a house that's good enough, there's never gonna be a restaurant that's good enough, and I think we need to be mindful that we represent everyone, a paycheck-to-paycheck person, and, again, those who have unlimited resources in our community, more power to all of them, um, but I represent all of them, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie?
Okay.
We'll move to my favorite part of the agenda, that's consideration of the claims. This evening, we are requested to consider meeting APV numbers twenty-three nine twenty-nine through twenty-three nine eighty-four, wastewater and stormwater payment APV numbers twenty-three nine thirty through twenty-three nine eighty-one, gross payroll APVs twenty-three nine fifty-three through twenty-three nine fifty-seven, and payroll deduction check APV numbers twenty-three nine fifty-eight through twenty-three nine sixty-one. Is all as presented in your backup materials, is there a motion regarding the claims as presented? I'll make a motion that we approve the claims as, as presented, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Clint. Now, because we have a motion and a second, the floor is open for any questions, comments, concerns, any issues regarding any of the claims as presented in your backup materials.
I have a question. From APV two, three, nine, four, five, for Commonwealth Engineers for twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand eight hundred. Where's the report?
It's, we don't have a report yet, but that was, oh, we, we agreed on a hundred and forty thousand dollar.
For which one was that?
That preliminary engineer report.
Yeah. That would've been on the, uh, the contract that you signed.
Okay.
So that's just the payment towards it?
It, it seems like it, I'm not sure on the billing side, but that's it, that's what Jim, that's for them, yeah. That was that initial contract.
They, they are very close to, I think we'll meet them next week and talk about the dollars that they presented, and then probably come back and talk with the council, maybe, et cetera, next meeting.
Yeah.
But I didn't like the route we're taking on this comprehensive plan, trying to make it simpler and updated more often.
Very much, yeah, yeah.
Well, and, Jim, something that I'd like to bring up real quickly. Can we put on the agenda for the next meeting, eliminating the requirement for certified mail, and in its place, use a certificate of mailing? Only because a certificate of mailing might cost sixty cents a piece, where certified mail is seven dollars and thirty-three cents a piece.
Well, we sent out a lot of wheat letters this week, grass letters, uh, you know, it does cost quite a bit. Ted, are we, can we send out letters that way, you know, for the violations?
You could, you could do those right, regular mail, there's, well, there's a requirement.
There's no requirement, they just come back today to get it, with certified mail, you give them a return receipt, which.
If they sign.
If it's a debate, if they sign. We get a lot of them back, they don't, certified mail, they don't, they don't, so.
So just something that maybe, something we could put on the agenda. Angie, any other claims, questions?
No.
Anyone else, issues with any claims? All those in favor of approving the claims as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and the claims are approved. Does anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor of adjournments, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.